I would like to give that a regular meeting in the town of Gooden East Texas will be held Tuesday, the 11th day of November, 11, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the South Texas Eco Tourism Center, Texas 100, the Gooden East Texas 7857. Pursuant to this government protocol, it's a 551.127, one or more members of the town council may attend, participate via video conference. It is informed the town council will be physically present at the above meeting location. The following items will be discussed. Follow me in order at 6 o'clock. Roll call and attendance.
Member Dr. Mail?
Here.
Mrs. Summer? Yes, here. Mrs. Peters? Here. Mr. Comedian?
Here.
Mrs. Bryant? Yes, here. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Carter?
Here. Indication in place. Sorry, my, my teeth seem wrong.
Let us take a moment to reflect. As we gather this evening, we honor the courage and sacrifice of our veterans and remember those who serve our community in many ways. May we also keep in our thoughts, as it be, offering compassion and support wherever we can. Grant us the wisdom to make decisions that uplift our community, the strength to work together for the common good, and the courage to act with fairness and kindness. In your name we pray. Amen. Amen.
I'd also like to say a blessing for Councilor Dr. Roe Metal. His father passed away this last Sunday on this memorial day. He was Roy E. Romero, U.S. Army, re-buried with multiple tours with MACB-OCOSOG during the Vietnam War. Father has been in page two. May God bless you and your family through this hard time.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the public for its parents, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas, where I pledge allegiance and city, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Big dust, the Gooden East employees. Yes, Mayor, members of the council. Try to do this into tradition that when we hire new employees, they're going to report the next meeting so you get the deal and hoping know a little bit about them. And then hopefully this is where your local AR. And we'll start with our administrative, as you administrative assistant, Rosa and our city secretary, which is supervisor, looking to do some.
Members of the council, I did want to go ahead and introduce our newest employee, Rosa Rodriguez. She is joining us as the administrative assistant. She brings with her a strong background in finance and administration, including experience in payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, records management, and election circuit management. In addition to her financial and clerical expertise, Rosa does have a solid foundation in property management and general administrative support, making her a really great addition to our office. Her attention to detail, organizational skills, and commitment to public service is undoubtedly able to contribute to the continued efficiency of our town and our office operations. So please join me in welcoming Ms. Rosa Rodriguez.
We also have a new member for our public works department, Shelby, and I'll let J.D. Mozales, who is a foreman, introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, town council members. My name is Jacob Zaldez. I'm the public works foreman for the town of Gooden East. It's my pleasure to introduce our newest member of the public works department, Mr. Shelby Galarza. Shelby joins our team with valuable experience now in the machinery related work. He has a strong background in hands-on, labor-intensive jobs that require technical skills, attention to safety, and a dedication qualities that make him an excellent department. We are confident that Shelby will be an asset as we continue working to maintain and improve our town infrastructure and public spaces. Thank you, and welcome me Shelby Galarza to the town of Gooden East Public Works.
Welcome everybody. Thank you guys for working for the Gooden East. I'd also like to thank the town council, not council, the town administration staff for the wonderful Memorial Day event we had today. You guys pulled it off in its grade. And I'd also like to thank the Cloud Cafe and commission, commission member. Perez for he, all the nice treats that we have there. Thank you. Item one, open forum. The public is allowed three minutes per person to address the council on any topic. There will be no discussion or formal action taken during this agenda. The speaker must identify themselves before speaking and through the request form must be presented to the city secretary prior to the meeting. First of all, we have Jacqueline Teeter.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jacqueline Teeter and I am a proud resident of the Gooden East. I want to first start by saying how much I love this town. The peaceful atmosphere, the friendly neighbors, and the beauty of this community are truly what make it such a wonderful place to live. Today, I am here on behalf of a school project for my environmental studies class. I care deeply about helping our communities stay as clean and beautiful as it deserves to be, as I ensure we all do. This leads me to the issue I would like to bring to your attention today. Over the past couple of months, I have noticed an increasing amount of trash along our public streets. One place in particular that I would like to point out is the dead-end street that meets Stripes. Items like plastic bottles, cans, wrappers, and even larger pieces of litter are becoming more common in that area. I know that this issue is certainly not unique to the Gooden East. Litter happens everywhere. But I believe that we can work together as a community to make a difference and address it in an effective way. Litter doesn't just affect how our community looks. It can also harm the local wildlife and our environment. A matter that concerns me in the location of this litter is relative to the building we are currently in, the South Texas Eco Tourism Center, which is only a couple of miles down the road from Stripes. The litter from Stripes, well as other locations in the Gooden East that can, over time, negatively affect the local wildlife. The wind and the rain can also easily drag this trash over to this area. I think that with a few small steps, we can make a true difference. Some suggestions I'd like to respectfully bring forward include organizing regular community cleanup days, possibly sponsored by local businesses or advertised through the city's website. I have noticed all of the park events for holidays are posted on Facebook to spread awareness. This page could also be utilized for promoting the Gooden East cleanup days. Number two is installing public recycling bins in areas such as the local park as there are only trash cans available. And lastly, number three are educational signs reminding residents and visitors to help keep the Gooden East clean. Sometimes a friendly reminder can go a long way. I believe that even with small actions like these, we can make a big impact and help preserve the beauty and pride that we all share in calling the Gooden East our home. Thank you again for your time, for your service, and commitment to our community. I truly appreciate all the work you do to keep the Gooden East a safe, welcoming, and beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Next, we have Bernice Garcia.
My name is Bernard Garcia. I live in British Columbia. And I have some issues. I want to know about the excavator. I was here a couple of months ago at your meeting and I was told that you all want to try get that, get an excavator, clean all, all the dishes. So we have no further issue anymore. That's one thing that I'm concerned about. So I want to update on that. And then also about this belt, a banny house and a banny structure for property that they got overweight. The grass is so high on it. They supply it with access. So we got it. As soon as you drive in, but I won't have these out to the right side that supposedly they sold that property, but fully wooded, fully grass, I mean it's a fire hazard. So what we need to do is that, you know, you don't need to cut it or get the owner to cut it or somehow another, we got to do, do we have some abandoned buildings, houses there on, this would be one. I think the address is 159 and the house that takes it to the right door, there's a bandit, the tree's overgrown. The, the grass overgrown and the house abandoned maybe by accidents. So we all need to do something about the houses too. That might be short, so hopefully help me by losing what we got to do. Okay, that.
Thank you, Garcia. Next, Mayor Daniel Holland, commander.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just want to give you a quick update on the public department. We did put in in October, right in, yeah, October, we purchased six radar for, for toy guns. We also got seven dash cam cameras for our unit. So they all came in over the second week in, in December. So we installed, we have key dash cameras. We also got an upgraded body camera for the whole department. It was on the contract that we saw after it was every three years, they upgraded to the newest version of that brand to use that. So those are the equipment that we've updated plus our, our purchase. So we should be receiving the, here, I think by the end of December without our January. It's been a large order for that specific model and range. So they're, they're looking behind it. Lastly, we had been, we applied back in July, 2025 for Operation Home Start. This is a, it's a state funded grant to help secure the borders. It's kind of like a stone garden, state funded. So it's to deter human smuggling or poachers, anything that's illegally coming across the border. They are funding us to go control our waterways and actually control the city to deter any crime that is coming, right? So we just got awarded for $135,000. Out of those $135,000, $35,000 would be allocated for equipment. So ACs, ACs or vehicles, something that, that we can use for this grant specifically for the grant. And then another $100,000 for offshore overtime. So just wanted to be there.
Item two, presentation of monthly financial report for the period ending September period 2025. Mayor and members of the council, we are, our council is going to report, we assume. Look at, we get a screen, she, whatever, keep her on. She's on.
We'll come back. Yeah, let me know when, when she's there. Item four, discussion of possible action approvals of bids to purchase the vehicle, the Gooden East Police Department. Item three, I missed one, sorry. Discussion of possible action approved October 14, 2025, town council meeting minutes.
I believe directions have been made. I'm going to motion to approve the minutes from October 14, 2025.
This is made by council member Brian. Second, it's by council member Hernandez to approve the minutes of October 14, 2025.
Councilmember Dr. Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Tony?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item four, discussion of possible action approval of the bids to purchase the vehicle, the Gooden East Police Department.
This is Mayor, uh, the mayor, how many?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Uh, in front of you, you have three bids. One of them is from Kathy. So they're all for the same type of vehicle, the 2026 Dodge Durango, auto drive, two vehicle. Base price, $42,690. This one outfitted, lights and everything, light sirens, KJ center consoles, everything, everything that we need. Comes up to a total of $64,556. The second quote that we got is from Sainsford, the government's league. Again, the same vehicle, 2026 Dodge Durango, auto drive. That one is $46,899 for the transport fee, $400. That one doesn't come with the outfitting of any lights, sirens, center consoles, KJ, partition. I have included some Dana Safety. They do all the local, actually all state agencies from here to Varejo, San Antonio, Dallas. They, everything that we need to add on to the actual vehicle of Sainsford comes up to the total So our last quote that we got was from Bogus, Tipping Presser out of Bronco. Same vehicle again. It's a little bit cheaper on the cost, $46,247. The other company, Kathy, didn't tell me that it's almost a six to eight month turnaround time for people to get around. Same story, it's about, I think it said four months. That's not including us taking into it the companies to get outfitted, which would probably take another two months. All this, just the vehicle itself with the partition, they included theirs, they had a partition and a center console, no lights. That one is a three-week turnaround. And if it's a cheaper vehicle or cheaper price, I should say not cheaper vehicle, cheaper price, faster turnaround rate, we wouldn't need to take this away, outside of, and still follow those. But I've spoken to Dana Safety, maybe they commented about maybe two, three week turnaround times. We purchased a license, it'd be a lot faster than that. Then ordering there. Again, the main stuff, the partition, the center console, so to be there. So between those three, we were looking even more towards the bogus, but just because of the quick turnaround time. Our Ford F-50s that we do have on the fleet right now will be handed over to public works, for that to take on the safety vehicle and for their needs. So we're looking something quick turnaround time so that they can have it for their needs as well. Any questions? Are there more constellations for the local?
Those vehicles, they receive a budget?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah, I'm going to motion to approve, um, the bid that Officer Mullin, that sees best within his department there for the Gooden East Police Department.
I'll say it. Can we clarify the case on what the bid is?
We'd like to purchase from the Bogus Tipping Presser for the amount of $46,247.
Is that clear?
With the addition of, with the addition of the lights from Dana Safety.
Which the prices are going to change just because this vehicle that's on the partition, that's kind of the center console. So that will be removed from the other bid. So it should come out, I would say $3,000 cheaper. From the installation, uh, I don't know, I think it's, it should be down to $10,000 and change. Yeah, it was $11,000.
Would you like to amend your?
I mean, I can. I can just write it down like just what he said. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the vehicle from Bogus along with the additions of Dana Safety. Even if you have a total number, like all that, the third total number, 57,000. 11, 12, 13? Yeah, I need 11, 12. Yeah.
Set. Motion made by council. However, seconded by council member. Request to approve the purchase of a police vehicle from Bogus Ford and additional safety equipment from Dana Safety, $7,000.
Councilmember Dr. Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Tony?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item five, discussion of possible action approval of the bids to replace air conditioning units for the Gooden East Library.
Mayor and council members, your old man, we called, something like recently back, the AC at the air conditioning unit at the library broke down and it, and it has, it operates with two units. And essentially one one broke down, which was the newer one. Before they could actually fix the, that one, the old one basically also gave up. We were able to have the newer one repaired. We, we don't know, it's, it should be good for anywhere from a few months to some years. However, the old one needs to be completely replaced and we took bids from that. We have two, two, two reported, J.D., our foreman, will read out the bids amounts and recommend obviously the best bid.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mayor, council. I got four bids for the air condition units, the condenser units, and the air handler unit inside the library. One of the quotes I was given, they were only able to give me a quote on a lower tonnage unit. So that wouldn't help us out at the library. The highest bid coming in was from a local company called DuePoint. They came in at $38,785 and that was to, to replace the air handler and the condenser unit. The correct air handler, the condenser unit. The second was coming from three new HVAC, they're from Mission. They came in at $32,500 and with labor, everything involved, just like the other ones. And the lowest came in from Thermal Air, a local air conditioner company. They came in at $29,496. And that is to replace the correct air handling unit and the condenser unit. So yes.
You know, you could recommend the lowest bid.
Yes, so recommend the lowest bid. Local lowest bid.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve Thermal Air. This bid is a local, the Gooden East.
That's very awesome.
Two, one, second. And they go with the motion statement of Mayor Carter. Second, it's by councilman Brian to approve Thermal Air, replacement of the air conditioner at the library.
Councilmember Dr. Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Tony?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
I'd like to sit to discuss some possible action, amendments to the Gooden East Advisory Board handbook.
Council, our city secretary has some words to say, but we will be asking that this side of the table, we still need to inform the council.
So we did want to update this handbook. This handbook has nothing updated in about 10 years. We did want to make arrangements that move to the duties and just deadlines of, that the board will be expected to meet. Just so that we can have some clear guidance as to how they're going to proceed, should they be assigned to.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Is the board, is the, is that government?
No, that was sent over, frankly, maybe whatever they need to go and figure out.
So we should have a minor recommendation for your next meeting. Amendment to the handbook.
Do we need a motion to take it?
Have you no paper with that? Yes. Item seven, discussion of possible action on the library board.
Yes, sir. On that one, with the exception of the CDC board, since we are updating the handbook, we are recommending that, that we wait for appointments to the, to the three advisory boards until after we, we go ahead and finalize the handbook. But the CDC on that one, that, it's not really an advisory board, that one, the council to go ahead and take action and make an appointment if that's what we all wish to do tonight.
I want.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that we've never had to wait on a handbook in order to appoint anyone. So I think that we should be able to appoint, even though the handbook is not updated, just my opinion.
That's fine. It's only a recommendation.
You have a question, Mary? The holdover doctor?
Yes.
I was going to explain the holdover doctor.
Yes, the holdover doctor is, is a, a Texas legal doctor that, that serves to preserve the status of a member of a board, a county council, or a city or board, in that office until that person's successor qualifies. In other words, if, if an office has a defined term that ends in a certain day or a certain month of the year, if there has been no successor appointed to that, to that, that office by virtue of the city not having filled it by, by action, then the person's term is basically extended until the person's successor is, is wanting to fill that position. The, if the person remains in every sense a member of that body with full voting authority, a full membership authority, until that person's successor takes that person's. Then that applies up and down the, the chain of offices that exist in Texas, municipalities, counties, school districts. It's, it's kind of a general universal doctrine that, that is designed to, that basically have vacancies occurring in the office just because some procedure hasn't yet happened that fills the offices.
And on the library board, on the library board, do we have anybody who expressed that they don't want to be on the library board?
We did have one, one member express that she wanted to resign.
We have one member who wants to resign.
Isn't Ms. Papert, didn't she get her, or no? Does she have her, no, I thought they were on last again, those ones.
We, on the last, you know, the council did a group with Patty Bradley and Miss Curry.
Okay.
So we do need reappointment just to go ahead and, and, and.
Okay, but, but who voiced the thing that they don't want to be here again?
We have Ms. Basie Capps, our resident.
Okay, so we have one position that, that we have unfilled.
Basie.
Well, if you didn't automate, you're doing the other lady's, there's one, two, three, then they can.
No, they already automate, you would like, I was doing no action.
Right, that's what I was asking. She said no, she wants an official appointment.
Well, exactly. Well, that's something.
Okay, so then, so then there's one.
There's one.
Okay.
Do, do we want to do the reappointments or do we want to take it until we talk about, the, the, because we're talking about how many members have.
Well, let me just, in terms of the advisory handbook, that, that's not going to substantially redo the, the number of members on each board. That can only be done by ordinance. And of course, for the CDC, that number is established by statute. We don't, we don't have a, a say of the number of, the number of seats there are on the CDC board. We do with the other boards, but if, if the council wants to change those, it has to be done by, by ordinance. The, the policy document that was, that we're talking about, they won't, won't change the number or the makeup of the board. It's just going to define, set procedures that applies to people who are going home. And, and, and it's, it's a revision to a policy that, that already exists. In other words, if there is a policy in place, what we're talking about is, is, or changed updates to it. And I've been working with the administration on, on doing it just to, just to ensure that incorporates all the latest changes to things like meaningful meetings that, the new deadlines and so. So, so there's no, there's no vacuum in terms of the existence of the policy. It's just one that we intend to change.
So we can make a motion to reappoint.
This, this board consists of five members. And there are three, obviously, that were considering to serve and they expressed that they would like to be reappointed as well. At the last meeting, the council reappointed all of them, appointed a new one. So finally, so in essence, if you have already filled the vacancy created by Ms. Capps at the last meeting. So the three remaining positions are the ones that are currently filled by the current board members.
So I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Ms. Olbath and Laura McGee, who, who expressed that they want to continue to serve the library for. who, who expressed, um, that they want to continue to serve the library for. In addition to that, add Ms. Nicole Exstrom, um, as the, the final, um, she would be a person for the.
She's a reappointment also.
She's in the reappointments, so the next time.
She's a reappointment also.
Yeah.
Yes, so the next time, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that makes us five.
And I'll second that motion.
Yeah.
So motion to recount where Harold, they're gonna recount to Brian to reappoint the remaining members to the library board.
Councilmember Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bays?
Yes.
Councilmember Trenge?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Edmonds?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
And Recreation Board.
So I make a motion that the reappointing is only a part of, to the Parks and Recreation Board.
I'll second that. Motion made by Councilmember Brian, seconded by Councilmember Dr. Romano to appoint Dr. David Park to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Councilmember Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bays?
Yes.
Councilmember Trenge?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Edmonds?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Ethics Board. Now, the Ethics Board hasn't mentioned ever, to be honest with you. Um, and I know we have a full board, and I know we haven't contacted probably any of them. I would ask if they want to continue to remain on the board. Ever?
No.
No, we haven't. So, in my opinion, I think it would be behooves to give them the opportunity before we appoint anybody over on top of anybody, to see if they would wish to continue on the Ethics Board or not be on the board.
I agree, I agree.
But that's.
City contact.
Yeah, everybody needs to get in contact, be on the Ethics Board and, um, if they want, if they want to show me genuine. Next, we have the Music Element Inc., Inc.'s Board of Directors. And I would like to nominate Kurt Schwerzler.
I'll second that.
Most of them are Mayor Carter's, they're gonna apply Councilmember Brian to approve Kurt Schwerzler to the CDC board.
Councilmember Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Trenge?
It's good.
Oh, Councilmember Bays?
Yes.
Councilmember Trenge?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Edmonds?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item eight, discussion of status of the Unabated's current grants.
Oh, one big favor, that I understand our, oh, right, okay, so we're gonna go back a long ways.
Item three. No, no. Item two, presentation of monthly financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2025.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council members. This is L'Oceano Tiri, and I apologize for not being able to attend physically the meeting. Um, presented before you is the summary of the general fund balance ending September 30th, 2025. Can you, can you all hear me? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the beginning fund balance is eight hundred and one thousand sixty-nine dollars. And we did have a fiscal year and change of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars. And then including the restricted of ninety days carrying over of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand one eighty-nine. We have a year and total fund balance, unaudited, uh, one point nine four three eight hundred eighty-nine uh, dollars. I do want to note, um, that in here, the only thing that is not included and I was still gonna, I need to finalize to get additional information is the, um, the capital outlay that was not, uh, expensed. I know we were, we needed to do an adjustment for that amount, I just need to know which, uh, line item to allocate it to. And that's about two hundred thousand dollars. On the next page, the balance sheet for the general fund, cash and bank, uh, one point one eight three hundred sixty-one year end, total assets, one point two three zero ninety-six, liabilities, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. And again, you know, the, the fund balance and the net change, which we just went over, um, one point two three zero liabilities and fund balance. And then the next page that you see, that's the restricted, uh, fund balance for the, the ninety-day expenses. On all the following pages, it's the individual certificates of obliga-, individual, uh, balance sheets for each, uh, fund, certificate of obligations, um, CDC. And unless you have questions, we can go to the fun, uh, income statements. That's on page nineteen. So for general fund, total revenues year end is three million, three hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred forty-one, which was, uh, significantly over what was budgeted of three million, nine thousand four dollars. The biggest, uh, impact was the property taxes. It was, uh, almost a hundred and forty thousand over what was budgeted on the revenue side. On the expenses, which is page twenty-three, we had total expenses of three million, fifty-eight thousand two hundred and ten. And the budgeter was three million, three hundred fifty-seven, three hundred and two. Which again, if you see that last section, um, part of it is the capital outlay that was, um, almost two hundred thousand dollars that was not used up yet. Do you have any questions on that?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
We're having a lot of concerns. Looks like we stayed in budget the entire year, we actually came out on top. Even with the worst-case scenario, I was saying that we have a two hundred thousand dollar hit to, uh, capital outlay, which we have a net income of two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars, that'd be fifty-nine thousand dollars. Our, our fund balance, as you stated, was one point nine million dollars. So it was stated two hundred thousand dollars, so that's one point seven million dollars. That gets us a hundred and ninety days of operating, which in any financial advisor, CPA would tell you is, uh, fan- fantastic. So we are financially super strong in this city. And, uh, the future looks very strong for us. We're able to do a lot of projects and we're gonna continue to make sure that everyone's projects are taken care of. The city is safe and cleaned up and taken care of, so. Thank the staff, what a good job that they do. These guys over here, they do amazing job, so. Thank you, guys.
Um, you also have, um, the check register on the end of your packet. And we also have, uh, the individual, let me scroll to that page, where we have the financials or the statement of revenues and expenses for, per department. Um, if you want me to go over that, we can go over that. That's on page thirty-six.
Anybody have questions on the check register?
Questions?
No.
Okay, unless there's any questions, then that would conclude my presentation. Um, I, I would, um, like for you to review it, like I said, if there's a little bit more information on this one, because it does have by departments, um, I know it's year end, but if there's any questions or changes um, on the future presentations, uh, just let me know, please.
We, we look forward to the audit to be done very timely.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure that will be out in the next couple of months, so we look forward to that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're on. Item eight, discussion and status of the Unabated's current grants.
There is, members, uh, you have the, uh, the forward application report on, uh, of each, the status of each grant, uh, in your packet. Uh, but of course, if you have any questions, it would be one glad to answer on any of the grants.
Anybody have any questions? My question is, when we're gonna start turning dirt to park?
At the park, uh, that would be the next item on the, uh, on the, on the bits behalf, but it's the next item.
Yeah, we essentially have tied, tied down, uh, two-thirds of the numbers. We've got benches, tables, uh, we actually awarded those to a better, to a higher bid. It's only thirteen hundred dollars, but it's three benches, eight A tables and three, or two A tables. We're doing that because they're going to last long. Uh, in our meeting with the Parks Department, they said, let's, if we need to spend a little extra money, let's make sure we have one that's more durable. Uh, because that's one of the cities, we still said, let's take that in case. And that was the one to go along. So it's the second lowest bidder, uh, who actually got that work. So they have a twenty-year warranty. So it's a, uh, the first ten years of non-compliant warranty, which is what we want to see. And then, uh, then we're gonna have an issue with that, the other one was only a five-year warranty. So we dropped that one. On the, uh, drinking fountain, they did add a, a hand wash station. And we said, well, first we thought we'd add it to the restroom building on the outside, but it cost the branding sewer and water just to get it to the outside of the building where you could, uh, that would be two costly expenses. So we were gonna add it to the drinking fountain. So I'm still waiting for the final numbers to come back. But we do have a lower quote on the drinking fountain, they're wanting to bring it back to us. So waiting for that, the exercise equipment, the one I looked at, the, uh, lower quote, I didn't like the durability of it. So we're going back to that one to see if they'll do a better coding or a better warranty, one of the two. Or I'm gonna move to the next set of equipment to get those up in, in the park. So, at this point, what we're recommending is awarding, uh, musical equipment, the benches, the tables, the soccer goals, and the floor-to地 rubber surfaces under the fitness equipment and the wood chips, the playgrounds. Total is forty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars. So we're continuing to bring everything in much, uh, lower than we had it first time. So we'll be able to spread that money out through a lot more work. We're actually gonna be able to work on the trails and bring, uh, parking lots into ADA compliance as well as the restroom, which wasn't in the original plan.
How, uh, what's the time that the vendors, uh, are telling us?
I've got, uh, we have two weeks to six weeks to deliver this equipment. Uh, and of course, when we talk about the rubber surface, we're not gonna do that until we install the fitness equipment, which we still need to, uh, uh, choose, and the drinking fountain. Hopefully, we can get that done before a Parks Committee meeting and we'll bring that back to the next, uh, council meeting. For those two items, everything else we can work on.
The other thing, Mayor, to answer your question, uh, I think within the next thirty days, we, we may be able to at least start in some of the work that we're gonna do globally, uh, either through contracting now or contract labor. And we will go ahead and actually call a, uh, I mean, a, uh, turnover the dirt, you know, so let, we did know that, uh, we started the work.
Yeah. In fact, uh, JD and I have bought the property. So we know, he knows what we're trying to achieve as far as making the trail better. Uh, that gravel grant that we have now, of course, is gradual, there's low spots, high spots, it's coming part. We're gonna be able to put in new gravel grant plus a polymer over it that makes it an harder surface, so it'll last long. So that'll be, can be done through the city, that can be started tomorrow. Uh, the restroom, uh, is not ADA compliant because you can't get to the sink. There's that pileoster that's in the way and has a hand dryer on it, I'm sure everyone's familiar with it. That has to come off and remount the hand dryer. And the sink needs a, a different faucet. And we're discussing whether the height and the depth is for it. So that, all can be done in the house.
Other questions?
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask, um, on these wood chips, uh, by American Parks, um, do we receive other quotes for other types of mulch?
Uh, no, we, well, there's rubber, but the rubber, we've disqualified rubber because too, too often when they, they make it from tires. And when they grind up the tires, they've got too many radial tires. So you get pieces of steel sticking out of the piece of the rubber. So we can't use rubber, it, it doesn't work, we're not getting the type of, uh, material that we want to use. On top of that, any other material we use, it's got to have a concrete base. The resilient rubber that we're gonna put under the fitness equipment and using for that is going on concrete. So if we did the entire playground area with a concrete base, we'd be out of our budget later. So we're gonna go back in with wood chips and let's look to the future for another grant. We're gonna try to come in with concrete and then with rubber surface, which would be best, but again, it's expensive.
So just. So just to be clear, for the, for the, uh, rubber mulch, it would need a concrete bottom? So you're talking about.
You want a surface like, a surface like at S. Rock's Park, right?
I, I, I feel like anything other than wood chips is what I'm trying to get at.
In my opinion, I think that the playground gets more, more use from, obviously, little kids, that the wood chips is, I would rather see the, the surface, not in fitness, but in that area.
In the play area.
Yes.
Yeah.
And even the, even in, because the music equipment, you're standing, so you're standing on the wood chips versus like I'm coming down a slide, fall on my rear or fall on my face. So wood chips on your face, wood chips on your back with, you know, two, three-year-olds, it's not gonna be very fun. You know, standing on mulch, wood chips on a musical player on it, like.
Well, wood chips are, they're piece of softwood, so there are fewer square meters, fewer problems less. So it's, it's a softer material. And one says, no, and two, when you look at the number of seventy-six hundred dollars, that covers both of the layer area. That's gonna go in twelve inches deep and it'll be compressed to nine inches. That's a great stop, that, you have to measure so we can do all the other work, the trails, the restaurants, the handicap parking stalls, which are not compliant at this point. Uh, so we can do almost everything in the park, whereas previously you were only gonna get the fitness equipment, music equipment, and, uh, the benches and tables, that's all we're gonna get. But even benches and, uh, the picnic tables need an ADA compliant access to where they're located. You see?
But Mr. Nelson, so is there, can you explain the difference in the cost between wood chips on the playground versus a resilient surface there?
Okay, uh.
That's, I think that's the question.
The two playground areas, we had a thirteen thousand square foot. Concrete goes in for a sidewalk at five fifty square foot. So if we look at that, we're, we're already a hundred thousand dollars placed. Then the rubber surface on top of it, you can see that that number is going in at fifteen dollars square foot. We're covering thirteen. We're covering thirteen thousand square feet for seventy-five hundred dollars, which is like seventy-six hundred dollars.
Mayor, it, it, it's, it's for a trade off versus how much we can get overall, right? And so hopefully, in the future, we can go after more grants, and so we can put that resilient surface down because we'll eat us over half the grant by just putting the surface on the playground.
And that surface is one hundred percent necessary for the rubber chip?
Yes, for the, for the resilient surface.
No, I'm not talking about the resilient surface, I'm talking about actual.
Rubber ball.
Rubber ball. It's unnecessary to have one people or a rubber chip. It's not necessary, but I would like to get a cost on that.
Well, I was about to say, I would make the first of those.
It's a very, you know, excellent example.
Yes.
They'll have, I guess, the. I think that's a great idea.
Let's, let's, let's go ahead and do this, because one of the things that's happening here is that the actual modules, as far as improving them or replacing them, that was not in this grant. But because of the work that we've been doing and trying to, we have gotten cost down. We have some ones left over that then we can buy the wood chips, but we couldn't do the, the resilient, what you have to put in the concrete and everything. Now, we can obviously include that in the next grant application where we would actually replace the whole module.
Yeah, but I think what, what they're saying is that they would like to see the cost difference between rubber chips versus wood chips.
Yes.
Okay, and, and to find a vendor that would give us a, a safe rubber chip, but guaranteed, right? That wouldn't have the radial tires in it.
Right.
I think that's, is that what I think you're saying?
Yes.
And, and I think that would be a fair thing for you to bring to the council, you know, and to the Parks Board next time, okay? It's just, because I, I do believe that that will be outside this grant anyway. Okay, so it's not really an issue with the grant, this is gonna be an expense on the city. So, so it's not gonna stop any, the, moving the grant forward, so.
I just don't, yeah, I was gonna say also, when we, when we met with Claudia Alexander last year on this grant, you're talking about the work, you're talking about the models that she presented, she, we didn't have access to that anymore? Or we do have access?
To the what?
On this particular park, the models that she presented to us, like we don't have access anymore?
The which models?
That she showed us.
Oh, like the, the equipment?
Mm-hmm.
The.
And I thought she basically took it off?
Yeah.
Remember she did that?
Yeah, so, but they went to the buy board.
And they just, it just, not avoided their.
No, no, we, we saved a bunch of money right on the lot to buy a board instead of having to go through their vendor.
Right.
Okay, so we, we were able to, to, to bring the parts up to ADA's, because she never put in the ADA's stuff for the trail. Okay, and then the benches and the picnic tables. Okay, so we have to, we have to add all these connectors to bring it up to ADA standards. So.
I got it.
Yeah.
And then on the, on the Texas Park and Wildlife Grant, we're supposed to, this is according to her, we're, we're supposed to have an assignment when we're gonna start, I still have that.
And the sign is just gonna live in here until we tighten the.
The collection, okay?
And also, we didn't walk the park and decide what else would need for assignments, you know?
Well, like the, no, she said the major sign that had like, looking to be says about to start this project, that's it.
Yeah, job site sign, no problem, essentially, beyond that, is there a plaque?
Mm-hmm, right, she said it's required by the Texas Park.
Right. Very familiar.
You know, actually, right now, Extra Plan, which is the company that provided first, we actually, they have all the benches and picnic tables because they have a twenty year warranty. You see, they are now running the drinking fountain, but they're trying to price adding the hand wash station too, which would be a whole lot less cost when you're trying to add to the front of the building as a parks connected by the city. Which I, I think tonight's a great idea, but we're just waiting for that.
And I'm sorry, I have another question, can you repeat the, I guess, the square footage for the, for the thirteen thousand?
Thirteen thousand. That's under the playground.
Right, that's the little one and the, those larger ones.
Thank you very much, thank you, sir.
Oh, and this part of it, for seventy-six hundred, it's statute, so. The other one as well.
Okay, so let's finish the number eight, then we'll come back to you in one minute.
Yes. Okay, any other questions, and any other other branches? Yes.
Oh, the question, we did says, the timeline goes from January twenty-third to January twenty-fifth, so we need a death extension. Where are we at on this?
Just today, there, in the last couple of days, the engineer was able to submit all the necessary paperwork and grant works that was in grant administrator. Basically submitted the, the official amendment to G L O for the extension and, and also the. So we're, basically that was the, the thing that has kept us from starting the work. And so as soon as, now that they have it, as of today, as soon as G L O approves that amendment, we get the notice of receipt with the work. So I'm hoping that.
This is our new timeline.
Yeah, and that's the time. Now, just because we're asking for a year extension, but according to the engineer and based on the work that we're gonna do on the drainage improvement project, it's not gonna take that long, but, but you can, you, you need to ask on any moments of a year. We actually have the opportunity to ask for two extensions, one year extension, so we're just asking for one because we have this faith that it's really gonna take about six, seven, eight months to do that complete project. So, but, but on that one, we may be able to start work as soon as, before the, of course, December is gonna be a difficult month as far as, but conceivably, that's when we're gonna start.
Mr. Rehne knows this grant is for nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-four twenty-four dollars. Your big ramp for town of Gutebys.
Thank you.
The last grant means comprehensive plan, three hundred thousand dollar G L O grant.
And I want to, as you may have been seeing, we've seen your companies in the emails with the, the grant, grant works, that is the, again, the grant administrator, but we're having a lot of problems with them. I visited also with the city manager from Rioanjo, they have the same grant, and they have the same representative from the same grant works. And essentially, we're, I'm actually meeting with an official of grant works. And I think we might do it together because there are people that are just not doing the work. And, and it's keeping us from getting started. So, but, but that is, it's a hundred percent grant, and it's gonna give the town the opportunity to update and revise our subdivision orders, do the planning for drainage improvements in the, in the future. And basically, everything that has to do with development and extension, all those things will need better rest through this point. The only thing is, until, I'm actually depending on this meeting that we're gonna have, and if we see some progress, we'll continue. If not, we, I may want to come back to this council and recommend that we take the necessary actions so that we can do the work even if it's without grant works, because that's what's holding us up.
Very good. Any other questions?
Give us all the questions, person.
Yes, on that one, we're still finalizing the contract with Mr. Knowles, who is the project architect that you all selected. He's, he's still already, he's already working on, on some of the design, but obviously, we're busy with the other ones. We do have, we have until the end of next year to, to carry out this project. That's, that's the first thing, obviously, Mr. Knowles will be doing the design, we'll put it up bids, and I think that we may, we should be through with our, in the next six months, complete work, which is the extension to the fire station. And that, obviously, that's gonna be covered with ARCA funds, which is the last project of the, of the total grant, which is just under two hundred thousand, the total grant was over seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen, which that is COVID funds, ARCA's COVID funds. So it's, because money's been hanging around for a while.
Yes, this is the last of it.
Any other questions? No. I have nine, discussion possible action on approval of the biz proposals regarding the purchase, installation of playground and accessories for roll-off park. We already had a nice discussion with Mr. Knowles regarding this. The total amount of, of the bid was forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents, which, of which we are asking him to come back for the wood chips, the playground, which is seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
So, so we recommend the total minus that, which is.
So the total amount is thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents. Which includes musical equipment, physical equipment, benches, picnic tables, soccer goal, drinking fountain, important place rubber surface.
Right, so if, if I'm looking at this, it doesn't include the fitness equipment or the drinking fountain, because those are white.
Right.
No.
All right, I had to look at it twice.
Looking to do that, we just haven't been able to get the correct equipment yet.
So. So we can, we can purchase these one, two, three, four, five items.
Yes.
For thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So I'll make a motion that we go follow through with the purchase of five items, the musical equipment, the picnic tables, the soccer goals and the important place rubber surface for thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents.
Second act, motion made by Councilwoman Bryan, seconded by Mayor Carter, to approve the purchase of the items that were discussed.
Councilmember Dr. Vamille?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Vittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonyis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Mayor Carter.
Yes. Item ten, discussion possible action on approval for city secretary to attend the election law seminar by the Texas municipal clerk certification program in January twenty-second to the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five in Round Rock, Texas.
Uh, Mayor, council, uh, council members, it's a matter that our city secretary will explain to you basically as a requirement for the election to be able to, uh, in the elections by the city secretary's office.
Hi, everyone, welcome to our project summer climate for the city secretary certification. However, with elections coming up, I may, there is a lot of legislative things that are gonna be discussed by the secretary of state here in December. Unfortunately, that class is completely full, being that I am in a position to get the certification which is part in hand to not only receive these updates regarding elections, but also use it as a goal to add it to the additional requirement for the certification.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the travel and attendance at the July election law seminar in January twenty-third.
Second, the council. Most of our council friends, they have, they have to approve. City Secretary to the Texas Municipal Clerk Certification Program, January twenty-second to the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Councilmember Dr. Vamille?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember, yeah. Councilmember Sunny?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. Item eleven, discussion possible action on approval of county assistant to attend the food budgets and balance sheets workshop in Nanticoes, Texas, December ninth to tenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Members of the council, on this one, as you know, we pretty much revamped our financial system operation for the city. And Carla, who just walked in, is the county assistant. And what she has, does have the background, this is me for her in terms of the daily operations of bookkeeping, et cetera, that then, or how she does report from. And this is about the only training that's very appropriate at this time and the closest. So therefore, we recommend that, that we send her for this training.
I was just like to say on the, on the, me, me personally, I would love to have, and I've voiced this before, but sort of like an overview, what sessions you went to, what did you learn, when you get to the table, I'm gonna send back the community, dah, 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 dah. Uh, because there were some who went to T M L and, how was it, how'd it go, you know, what do we know? What sessions you guys went to and something like that, so just for future, and that would be, that'd be great, so we can get some feedback.
Did the council wishes that we, we can put in the agenda a, a report on all the trainings that, that we attend.
That's good. I'll make a motion that we approve travel and attendance to the food budgets. But sorry, I forgot those two names. To the food budgets and balance sheets workshop for some stay looking at in December.
I'll say that. Motion of the council for Bryan, seconded by Councilmember Hernandez, to approve the food, toilet, and balance sheet workshop in Nanticoes, Texas, December ninth to the tenth.
Councilmember Dr. Vamille?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Vittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonyis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes.
Item twelve, discussion possible action on the status of the renovation of the portal building.
And Mr. Council, you have in your packet, basically, a letter from, actually, the project architect. We have actually, well, he has actually taken pre-bids for doing the work that needs to be done in terms of renovating the building. And this is obviously just to repeat, the building will be used for the council meetings, also for the municipal court, and for storage and, and one office for the building official, which will be hired. Those, those are the bids, and Mr. Knowles can answer any questions, but essentially, we have those bids, or we, we have the option that we wanted to act as our own general contractor, which will decrease the cost, but only about twenty thousand dollars. Can we do it? Yes, it's, it would be a lot more, more difficult. But whatever the wishes in the council is, then we either go with the, with the lowest bid or, or do it in-house. But also, and, and Mr. Knowles prepared, which is attached, his estimate for doing it in-house or acting as our own general contractor. But I would like to, before you, before you take action of this, we do want to show you what the building will look like after we get through with the work. This is just, obviously, the layout of, of the property included in the building. And this would be the side view, which is faces the street, hard tan. That's what we plan to do, but this would be the, the front. We, we plan to move the digital sign that's over here by the old building that nobody can really see, we want to move it over there. Obviously, we would add arching, the landscaping, and then the design that Mr. Knowles is having, you know, in terms of, those would, the windows will be replaced with larger windows. And of course, we have to have a handicap rack. What are the next, and then this will be the side view from the alley. We'll have to have a second entrance to the building, so it would, that would be it, additional parking as well. And so, the, the thing is that we do need your definite direction. Do we do this, and you, and you can give us that direction by basically approving the next step, which is either the bid or instruct us to go ahead and do it in-house. But that's the way we would like to see, that's the way it would look once we get through the work.
How much was the portal bought for?
Each one, I believe, eighty, eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Yeah, each one.
We already gave away one, right?
So.
We gave away one, so.
So, yeah.
We saw the renderings, we saw the renderings on paper here, September or August, one or two months. And then October, this is obviously, you guys haven't seen this, I missed October, is that a game? So now we're seeing this, October, November, so two months for that. It looks great, but the fact of the matter is that, like.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad you brought this up.
Because.
I'm glad you brought this up. And if I may respond, I will tell you why we have that situation, which I totally agree with you. The reason it's been that we have not made up our minds one way or the other. We were going to use the building, and then when we started, the building was going to be used for something else. Then that was changed, and so consequently, we couldn't move. Right now, again, that's why I say we need some definite direction. If we don't get that direction, then it's going, it's going to sit there. So yes, a lot of time that's been used up, but let's, we can't just go into it until we get approval from this council.
And we've reserved, as you remember probably, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for this project.
How much?
So.
I have a question.
This was reserved well before we started this project. There was another project with the privacy manager that we were misled on. And so we had already reserved that money for this project. And so this is a hundred and eighty nine thousand.
The lowest order is one fifty one.
Yeah, so, you know, we're looking at a thirty one thousand dollar additional funding for this.
There's also money that was set aside for the fire station, but it's very obvious, the expansion, that in case we didn't have enough ARCA funds. But that, the ARCA funds that are still remaining will more than cover that. And therefore, the money that was settled here for general fund can be used to offset this, this cost.
Which is another hundred fifty thousand dollars that we reserved two years ago. Exactly. But we did, we reserved a total of three hundred thousand dollars for the two different projects.
Three hundred thousand, yes, and the, yes, and then thirty five was for the architect, remember?
Yes, exactly. Okay, so we have the remaining hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, from that hundred fifty. So we have a total of two hundred and change, okay. That's been reserved two years. I mean, it's just.
I personally, I mean, I personally think a hundred and eighty one thousand, which is the lowest number that we have here, is excessive to put into a portable building. I just, I was eight thousand.
A temporary building.
A temporary building, and I just, not me, but. I don't know if this gets a hold or sits there a little bit longer, unfortunately.
The only downside to that is that we will still have a very inadequate police department building. Because what would, this would happen, but then we would be able to relocate the meeting room to this building. The police department would expand into the current meeting.
That we understand.
But, but that's the only way. We need to then have the meeting room somewhere else.
So the one eighty one does not include the modification to the current city hall for the expansion of the.
No, this is just for the, for this building.
So how much is that going to cost, you think?
We don't know that yet. The main problem with the precinct is the roof, it's going to have to be re-ruined completely.
Yes.
Yeah, that's going to be the main cost. The rest of the, the next item is going to be ADA compliance, because it's not compliant with the whole of that building. And then the rest of it is pretty much cosmetic internal work. It's, it's difficult.
My only concern, though, is.
And, and to build a nice building, right? I mean, even the metal building was almost a million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, it was nine hundred and some change. And then to build like a permanent, nice structure, we're looking millions of dollars.
Right. I think that the dream in house.
It's a tough city.
Ninety six, seven, seventy five. My only concern with that, which is way cheaper than the one eighty one, is that it's, it's, that it's the same, it's, I just feel like it's making overwhelming for Mr. Knowles to have all these projects. He has the fire station, roll-out park, and then to add the, the portal building onto his plate, I don't know, I just.
If I'm right, I'm going to go with quarter fifty bucks and. Wait, this is, to be honest, my return. This is easy.
Oh, we're not on the timer, it's the, we're on like, let's get it done, it's the, and this is like, you know.
Yeah, the rest of the project that we were counting, technically, missed, right?
If I'm looking at this correctly, it's, if we do, if the city does it themselves, it's a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars, and it says we'll take a hundred and twenty days. Is that correct? And Donald M. is a hundred and eighty one, do they have a timeline?
What's the timeline with the contract?
If I meant, all three are the contractors, and they do a good job. So I expect that the three-month timeframe would work with either, anyway we do it. The only question becomes if we try to go through the city and the city staff gets stretched, then that time gets stretched. And as Victor would like to point out too, we don't necessarily have to ask the city staff to do this. We could still subcontract a lot of the work, which essentially means a lot more time on my behalf and on the city's behalf. So we stretch the staff at the city, if the city tries to do that work. At the same time, we're trying to do roll-out park, as well as all the regular city functions that the employees do.
And the drainage project.
And for drainage projects, which is going to come on board, and that's going to be proof that.
For twenty two thousand dollars more, they can still meet the hundred and twenty date.
We're sort of asking them to meet hundred and twenty, from the time they did contract.
Well, it's not very, we can also pump the project and sell it. And to answer one of the concerns of Victor, the option is we can, we can pump the project and, and we can sell the building. Okay, I mean, that's an option. I mean, that's just to be honest. That's, that's a.
That's the best one. Well, the problem, yeah, well, the, and the other, the other side note that we don't have is how much is the expansion going to cost for the police department? Because do we even have any means to afford that remodel? The roof has to be done, no matter what. So that, we should have a vote with all of you at the next meeting. Because I think that that roof is probably twenty years old, where it's.
Long, we're going to. And failing, a non-working silver crown on it.
I just, I just feel that a police department can't afford to wait any longer to get that, in that space.
Well, I can't, I think, I think we should table it personally, and we should really reflect on what you guys really want to do right now. Because I think this is a. We're not in a good situation when it comes to space, to this situation. We have to really, not just throw money, we shouldn't, don't even throw money at it, in my opinion, so. Let's really think about it, and hopefully, next meeting, we can come up with a solution to move forward, use it for something else, sell it, or do the project, whatever, something. We just don't want to throw money at something that we don't really feel confident about it right now, so.
Got a, like, suggestion?
No, sir, not right now, I'm sorry. But at the next meeting, if we have three minutes, we'll be looking at speed.
Well, just, we must, well, to talk about, in time. One of the things we consider too is parking lots, it's on-site, landfills, etc. Not much of landfills, but that parking lot and running sewer water to the building, yeah, that runs a numbers.
It's expensive, exactly. Infrastructure is very expensive, especially.
Especially we're in our, yeah.
Are we okay with table, guys?
Yes. Yeah.
Item thirteen, discussion possible action on Big Heroes, use of Rollout Park for the annual fun run on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty six.
Members of the council, I have provided a map. Big Heroes did reach out to the town to seek permission to use Rollout Park and Pulton to streets for this event. So they are doing a one-mile run at lower supply pain. So we would need to either Pulton to streets, obviously, provide more police manpower for this, but it would be something that they're asking for permission to do here in Louisiana. From my understanding, it has been done in the past, but in order to go and get it forward with this, we have to make sure we inform the residents of street culture and help these.
And Mayor Carter, I'm the executive director of Big Heroes, I'm happy to answer.
We've been doing Big Heroes here for years, as you know. We would love you to come up and speak about it.
Oh, wow. So those of you all that know, well, my name is Kristy Gonzalez, and I'm the executive director of Big Heroes in Brownsville. And we've been doing our fun run and five K here in the town of Louisiana, so this is going to be our sixth year. And it actually was started here by Stephanie Wilson, which is a resident of Yales. Her son attends, is one of our members at Big Heroes. And so we've been super happy, you know, having it here. We're just happy to come back. If you don't know about us, we are basically a nonprofit organization that we train individuals and adults to special needs and abilities. We teach them life skills, vocational skill, vocational skills, independence living, so they can go out and just become more independent and seek employment if they want to. And this is our sixth time, and it's one of our favorite fundraisers.
Thank you so much.
It's my pleasure.
We're excited to have you guys back.
Okay, thank you so much for having me here.
I make a motion to approve the use of Rollout Park for the Big Heroes Annual Fun Run on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty six.
Okay.
And, or, maybe, I don't know, maybe, we, Mayor Carter, it's likely, Councilman, that is to approve the Big Heroes use of Rollout Park.
Councilmember Dr. Formel?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. Thank you. Hope your minutes are very successful, as it usually is.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, executive session, if they get a closed session in accordance with the WUZ Act, it's authorized by the Government Code, regarding the matters upon the agenda pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one, conversation with county attorney, five five number one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, five five one point zero seven four deliberation regarding personal matters, and five five one point zero eight seven deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We're going to discuss discussion and propose employment terms for the fire chief, discussion and proposed reclassification salary. Harson Works foreman and party manager, competition, initial six-month evaluation of the city manager. Was to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Motion made by Councilwoman Brian, second, by Councilwoman Hernandez, to go to executive session.
Councilmember Dr. Formel?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonyus?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes, executive session at seven forty four. Back from executive session, seven forty two. A special possible action on, um, special possible action on what is discussed in executive session.
I'll make a motion that this proceed is discussed in executive session. Okay, yeah.
Motion made by Councilwoman Brian, second, to, to proceed at discussing executive session.
Councilmember Dr. Formel?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonius?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes.
Item sixteen, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilwoman Brian, second, by, to meet.
Councilmember Dr. Formel?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fittis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonius?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Carter.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for showing up with me. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Safe and happy holidays with all your family and friends.